City Commission Study Session, we ask that you turn off for silence all cell phones. Meetings are televised every day on Channel Two at 6:00 PM and midnight and also available for viewing on YouTube. We have one item on tonight's study session, and that is the presentations for Fire Station Three and WPC Administration Structures.
Mr. Mayor and Commissioner, in just a second, I'm going to turn it over to the teams presenting tonight. Just a brief recap, upon the completion of the Animal Control Building, the next city facility identified by the City Commission, by the public, by the staff was replacement of Fire Station Number Three. It's the final station that has not received a significant upgrade in the last fifteen years, dates back to the 1960s and 70s, and it's in much need of replacement. You remember, a couple of months ago, we did a full assessment of the wastewater treatment plant, and the number-one recommendation that came out of that for health and safety standards was a separate wastewater administration building. The Commission was briefed on that. Having the, a lot of the processes involved in the treatment of wastewater in the same building as the administrative offices was determined by the Commission and by our consultant to be something we needed to address. So what staff did with Fire Station Three and the Water Pollution Control Administrative Building was to combine those two processes into a design bid-build. We put that out in RFQ, and RFQ is a process by which you select the firm that is best for your project. It's not based on a bid price, but you're looking for the best team to accomplish what you're looking for. So we went through that process, staff did do submissions and some interviews, and we selected two teams to be here tonight to present to you. What we're going to do tonight is turn it over, about forty-five minutes for each team, including questions, you know, give or take, and then at the end of tonight, you'll go back and have time to consider their proposals, ask follow-up questions, and when you feel, or I have reached out to you, when we feel like we have a consensus, we'll put it back on the agenda, and then look forward to the Commission giving a consensus to, for staff to move forward with one of the teams on a scope of services. So if there's any questions on the process, I'm happy to answer those after the meeting, but I'm going to turn it over to our teams. So our first team is from Julius Cause Construction with WSKF Architects, and here they are to present their proposal.
Good evening, I'm Jody Cause, President of Julius Cause Construction Company. I want to thank you guys for having us and thank the members of the selection committee for the opportunity. We are a fourth-generation, locally-owned, general contractor, and we'll share some of our capabilities tonight.
I'm Jeff Cause, Senior Vice President and Estimator.
Will Mayness, Director and Vice President, Julius Cause Construction.
Rick Kuehl, WSKF Architects, Principal.
Dalen Novak with WSKF Architects, I'm also a principal.
Hi, good evening, Colby Crowell, I'm with McClure Engineering, I'm the civil engineer on this team.
Okay, so, good evening. First, I would like to thank the Commissioners and members of the selection team for giving us the opportunity to present tonight and share our capabilities for your consideration. Julius Cause Construction and WSKF Architects have been successfully completing design-build projects in Leavenworth and the surrounding area for over two decades. WSKF and Cause have designed and constructed fire stations, admin buildings, maintenance facilities, and other types of projects. We have both worked on projects with private owners, cities, states, and the federal government. Our design-build team has completed multiple challenging projects consisting of new construction and renovations, all of which were a success. As a longtime local contractor, Cause Construction will bring added value to the city. Our experience and ability to self-perform multiple scopes of work gives us the ability to keep our projects on schedule and within budget. We employ local skilled tradesmen that perform demolition, site work, site utilities, concrete, and carpentry. If given the opportunity, we will work diligently with our design team to give our city the best value.
Here are a couple of examples of some of the work that Cause has completed. The first two projects, Fort Leavenworth Building 320 and Fort Leavenworth Building 120, were renovation, extensive renovation projects that were completed as design-build with WSKF Architects. And then, Cause Construction also built Fire Station Number Two at Fort Leavenworth, and as well as the Guidance Center.
A little bit about WSKF Architects, as you can see from the slide, we were founded in 1968, so if you're quick with the math, you'll know that's a little over fifty years that we've been in continuous business. We're very proud of that history, the fact that as an architectural firm, we've been able to work with a number of clients over that fifty-year period. In fact, our founder actually still comes into the office on a pretty regular basis. Homer Williams actually founded the firm in 1968, so he's the W, WSKF. WSKF has had very good fortune of being involved in public safety design with a focus primarily of public safety design in the last ten to fifteen years. Over that time period, we've completed over $120 million in terms of public safety design projects for police, fire, EMS, 911 facilities. So, again, we're, we're very fortunate to have had that experience. The map in the upper right-hand corner kind of gives you a little bit of the idea of the footprint in terms of where we've had project experience. So, currently working from Casper, Wyoming to Gainesville, Florida. So those states that are in red are where we have active projects or where we have completed projects for that $120, $180 million in project experience. One of the things you'll find out about WSKF, given the opportunity to work with, with you, is that our attitude is this, is that we're, we're here in service of you. Our design work is a reflection of the direction that you give us in terms of what you're looking for from a facility standpoint. So, we think we have a very practical approach from, when it comes to designing for public safety, understanding that there are many nuances in terms of design for fire, understanding that that's a facility that's occupied 24/7, 365. So, the biggest challenge, quite frankly, from a design standpoint is how to create a facility that is home-like but wears like iron, because firemen are very hard on fire stations. And normally, when a fire station is built, it's in service for forty or fifty years. So, one of the biggest challenges is finding materials that represent that home-like atmosphere over that time period. But anyway, that's, that's a little bit about us. Here's some of the projects that we've designed, upper-left-hand corner is Owasso, Oklahoma, that's actually a public safety training campus, so it involves fire administration, fire station, fire training, so a fairly, fairly large campus. Anyway, just, we do renovation projects, we do expansion projects, we do ground-up projects, so we're in that world on a daily basis, and very proud of that history and very honored to have that opportunity to serve the public safety agencies we've worked One of the things that happens with the opportunity to work with public safety on a daily basis, and when I say daily, I think we probably have four or five fire stations that are in one stage or another right now, so either in planning, in design, in bidding, in construction. So, you know, given that opportunity, if you're paying attention, if you're humble enough to listen, you learn a lot from the work that you're doing right now. And our attitude about that is you turn that over into what's the next improvement in terms of the station that you want to work on next. So we have this attitude of continuous improvement in terms of the work that we do, and elevating, if you will, the status of that. So, the station that we did yesterday is not the station that we're going to be doing that's going to look like today, or it's not going to look like the future. Each of them has their own personality based on two things, the agency that you're working with, and the lessons that you learned from the last project that you worked on. These are some of the key points. Firefighter health and wellness, if you're not aware of that, is a significant issue in the fire industry these days. Firemen are more likely to contract cancer than their peers in other professions, and if they contract cancer, they're more likely to die of cancer as a result of the work that they do. So, we're big believers in this notion that where you work shouldn't make you sick. And so, our focus has been on firefighter health and wellness and ways to mitigate the dangers and the risk of where they work. Their job is dangerous enough as it is, where they work should not add to that circumstance. Let's go to the next slide. We're also big believers in terms of return on investment, and return on investment in terms of the money that the city will invest in this facility, and realizing, or hoping at the end of that process, that you feel like the money that has been expended on the facility is going to return to you in durability, in performance, turnout efficiency is a big thing in the fire industry, getting out of that bunk room to the apparatus and getting to the event, all has a timed component to it. So, when you design a station that is inefficient, that means that the path of travel from that bunk room to that bay goes through many twists and turns, you're going around corners, it's not efficient to get to the apparatus, that's going to be a legacy that's going to exist for that station, for the life of the station. And as I said earlier, stations are often in, in service for forty or fifty years. Those are things that you can't really overcome if it's a bad decision at the beginning of the design of that process. So, we're big believers in having conversations with fire personnel, they're going to occupy that facility, listening to them in terms of what their issues are for that particular station and designing to those requirements. Given that this is a design-build process, what that really means to us in our world is that we're partners, and we're partners from day one, and we design things day in and day out, but we don't build the thing. And cause construction, obviously, is that, is that component in terms of completing the, the construction process, the design process with the construction. So what does that mean? Well, that means that we have to communicate a lot, we have to listen to one another. When we're being told that what we're designing isn't within the budget, we have to design within the budget. And when we're having conversations with Cause about, here's our experience with fires, the projects that we're doing right now that are under construction, we want to share that education, share that knowledge, share that insight, and complete the project in a true partnering way. So, that, and as you saw earlier, or heard earlier, we've completed $20 million worth of work, so we're not coming to your project to learn, although we will learn. There are things that we will learn because we always do, if you're really listening. But, we're coming to your project as an experienced team in terms of partnering before. So, this is an experienced team that's being brought to you to deliver, to develop and deliver this project. So, you know, what, what that hopefully means is that the outcome of the money that gets invested with us shows results in terms of return being a good product at the end of the process. We've got a few slides that have been prepared to really speak to Station Number Three. We're going to focus now on Station Number Three and talk a little bit about some of our preliminary insights. Obviously, we've not had conversations with the Fire Department, we've had not, we haven't had conversations on the Water Pollution Control Building, but here's some insights we have in terms of what we've been able to glean from fairly high level. So, what you see up there is a 2014 aerial view of Station Number Three, and pay attention to the road configuration in particular, because that has changed.
This is prior to the Limit project.
Yes, yeah, so, we're starting here because we want to kind of show you the evolution of things as it occurred over time, and I think Kobe's going to jump in here as well.
Yeah, I think just showing the improvements to the roadway section, there's a little bit of additional property that's available to, to construct on, but a couple of things we want to point out as, as part of that, I think if the next slide comes up, is, is the floodplain. So you can see in the purple area, that's what they call a 100-year storm, that's, that's the floodplain area, then you have the floodway area, that's the, the blue and the orange. So, as we move the building or try to use some of that property, we have to kind of stay out of, out of that unless we do some additional work to get it, you know, permitted or, or do some building there, but all that does is take time and a little bit of extra effort to put together a few studies to make sure that we can build in that without having an adverse effect on, on the site itself. So that's, that's one thing we were looking at and concerned about. Second piece is the actual property lines themselves. We know that as we do the new facility, it's going to be a little bit bigger, the configuration's going to be a little bit, it's a lot of different dimensions in that. We need to make some adjustments to the actual property lines themselves, whether it be through replating or in, just to show that the whole new facility is within the property line itself. So we'll have to do that, and then maybe a third consideration, and a fourth, third one being, there's a water line that, that goes to the site now, that we'll have to do a little relocation with that, and then the other one is the trees. There's a lot of beautiful, mature trees on this property side that we have to really look at and try to design around so that we can save them as best we can, but there's, there's the great potential that we'd have to take them out in order to, to build the facility that we have. And I think the last thing, if I can just mention real quick, is, is the way we have looked at the site, it's kind of anticipated that the existing fire station will come down, and because of that, now you've got rules, regulations you need to follow as far as setbacks off the property line, as far as your land use area, if you have some mining, landscaping, your stormwater management that we'll need to be aware of, and so that all has a major effect on the, the site and the, and the lot itself.
So, the bullet points you see up there are some of the things that architecturally we would focus on. So, as you know, apparatus is a pretty big equipment and weighs, has a pretty significant weight, so apparatus, access, either exiting the station, returning to the station, or maneuvering on-site is pretty key, because apparatus doesn't turn on a dime. In fact, we kind of use the rule of thumb, rule of forties. So, 40-foot apparatus, 40-foot turning radius, 40-foot parking space. So, those are all pretty big numbers, but they can get even larger if, depending on the apparatus that is at this station. You know, one of the things that we look at fairly closely is what is the fit of the fire station to the neighborhood? You know, we always have operated in the philosophy that once you have a fire station in, in the neighborhood, try to take it out, the neighbors will tell you that, we don't want you, we don't want to lose our fire station, but if it's not already there, getting it in is also a challenge. So, listening to the neighbors, understanding kind of what they feel is a good neighborhood fit for their neighborhood is a key design parameter for us, just as this FEMA requirements in terms of floodplain and floodway. One of the things that we heard was that there was a reference to Station Number Two, existing Station Number Two, as maybe a, a guide in terms of what Station Number Three should be. So what you see is an overlay there, a clipped image of Station Number Two that's actually been set onto Station Number Three's site. As you can see, based on the current property line and what Kobe just alluded to, was that that station, if it were taken kind of verbatim, would obviously not fit on this site because the, without the adjustment of the property lines. So the property line that's on the west side and on the south side overlapped the footprint of the station, so it would be a challenge unless you're going to begin to look at multi-story stations for design solutions for this site, and we've done multi-story, and those have their own design challenges and parameters to meet ADA requirements, meet the functional requirements of, of the Fire Department from an operational standpoint. But, I guess the, the takeaway here is this, is that we just kind of wanted to give you a little bit of insight in terms of some of the parameters that we'd be looking at. We obviously have FEMA to address from a floodway and floodplain standpoint, so we know we have another design parameter to look at in the development of this station. But, I don't know, at this point, do you have any questions about what we've shown you so far?
So how many square feet do you see fitting in there, and you said that's, that is number two, put, put there, is too big, so?
Yeah.
How many square feet is in there now?
So, the current station, I believe, is somewhere in 6,000 to 7,000 square foot range.
That's correct.
That, I think that's, that was, it's a two-bay drive-through station, so, based on the bunk configuration.
That structure is backing.
The back end.
It's backing only.
Okay, I, I'm sorry, I, I, it's been a while since I've been there, so, but anyways, so, the envisioned station, I think to answer your question, would probably be in the 9,000 to 10,000 square foot range as a three-bay station.
This one is, the one that you overlaid is 10,000-ish.
Yeah, so, and I think we were looking at eight bunks for that station, so, we normally look at the number of bays and the number of personnel, kind of give you the design parameters for the footprint.
Okay, I have some questions. So, are you saying, am I understanding that where that fire station is now, you have to tear that down and rebuild on that piece of land, you can't build on the other piece of land that's sort of beside it because it's floodplain?
Correct.
I mean, wasn't that when it was filled in, like tubed or anything, or still you just can't do it because of FEMA?
Well, I have a note here to myself that, one of the things I would really need to check is when the, because I don't know this yet, so when they did the actual road improvements, did they readjust the actual floodway and the floodplain lines? I don't know that, and, and because we're taking this information off the existing FEMA maps that are available to us, and so that's what it shows now. So there might have been some work done, it just hasn't been mapped yet, and without doing a lot of digging to find that, that's one thing. But, we could build on that, but you have to go through an extra permitting process through FEMA to get the approval of that. So you've got another entity you get to work with in order to be able to do that.
Okay, so it's not that it couldn't be done, Kamala, it's just that, well, first of all, I, I do believe that Limit Street, the improvements that they did on Five Mile Creek, they're probably, the maps probably are not updated, so that would eliminate a lot of.
So that's the first piece that we would need to confirm and find out as we move into the initial phases.
Yeah, so Kobe is right, the, the floodway and floodplain represented here came off the FEMA map today. So that's what FEMA is posting as the current parameter, so we would need to check.
As of what they have in their notes as of today, yeah.
As of this date, or that's just what they have?
That's just what they have.
That's what they have.
It may be, well, we updated it five years ago.
Yeah, even though you did the road improvements, that doesn't adjust the, the mapping, you have to go through another process with FEMA in order to adjust the maps.
Okay.
Only question that I have so far is the, the lifespan of the new facility, it's going to be 40 to 50 years?
Yes.
Okay.
Are you looking at more bays than what's there now for growth?
They want, I believe, three bays.
Three bays.
Drive-through bays versus the two just pull in and have to back up, yes.
Any other questions?
Is that how many are over at number two, is it three or four over there? I can't remember.
It's three, I believe.
Three, okay.
So the future, the future fire station will be, come in through the back, be ready to go out in the front?
Yes, yes.
And do we own the property to do that? To the east of the current station?
I.
So what, what you. Or will you move the station?
So what you see up there right now is there are front and back bays that are shown, aprons, if you will, front and back aprons, so, let me, so.
This is the, the front apron from the St. George Station up the street, and here's the rear apron.
Okay.
So one of the luxuries of this is there's a road on the other side, so that makes it pretty inefficient. With this station, you're going to have to pull around and drive through.
Sure.
And that's why I said that rule of forties, so 40-foot apron, 40-foot turning radius.
But to his point, if they will be able to drive in and drive out, it's not.
Yeah, the, the, the charge is to have a drive-through.
Yeah, that's, that's the way to do it.
Okay, oh, thank you.
Okay, I, no other questions, I think we want to move on to the Water Pollution Control Building.
So as, as Rick is leading the entire project and really focusing on the fire side, I'm going to focus on the Water Pollution Control Building, and so, we know that the site for the building is going to be on that southwest corner, really out of the floodway and floodplain for, for this site. We do understand, after working on the Animal Control Facility with, with you guys, that we need geotechnical work done, that, you know, if there was bad soils there before, we did piers on that site and that kind of thing, so we'll be looking into that with the additional testing that we'll do with Kobe here. But we're, what we're going to focus on is, again, listening to the users that are going to be in this building and providing the space needs and going through this, we'll exercise, Rick will be doing the same thing with fire and listening to all the different things and compiling that into, into the building needs. Again, we heard, you know, that health and wellness is also important for this building, we're trying to get them out of the processing building where there's a pretty good odor and just getting people to be more efficient, natural light, and all those kind of things to make their work really efficient as well. So bringing them out of that building is a really, a good thing. Also, just, we'll be looking at, you know, what type of structures can be used for this building as well. Is it a pre-engineered metal building, or is it traditional construction? And we'll be working with Cause to, to work through those things as well. So, really kind of the same things that we're doing with fire in terms of space needs and all of that, but just making sure we listen to the, to the project, and I know you want to talk about some of the site, site things on this as well.
So, just on the same, same kind of premise of this side, you have some flood issues here as well that are mapped, so we're looking at the, the building being over in this location here. Couple things we have to be aware of is there's already studies in place to expand the wastewater plant where a couple additional basins will be set, so we'll have to make sure that's out of the way of that. There's a water line that follows the, the access road through there, as well as there's an interceptor, which is a large sewer that kind of feeds the whole, you know, front side of the sewer plant. We just have to be aware of all those things to make sure we put this facility in, in the location to miss all those things, we don't have to do additional fieldwork. This building itself is going to have some, not only some administrative space, but also a training area from what we understand, so we have to make sure that we have plenty of space for, for parking, for people to get in and out, ADA access, to actually use this facility once it's up. And then, I think the last point I wanted to make about this is some of this site was used for leaf and brush, from what I understand, and so, we have to really be aware of the soils that are there, so that the new building is sitting on some solid ground before, you know, before it gets all done, so we've just had to check that out as part of our, our work to site, place the building on the site.
Obviously, most projects have a budget, we assume that this project will have a budget as well. So, I think that one of the things that you'll find about us collaborating is that one of the big things for us is determining what we consider a master budget. So, when you ask somebody about a project and what it costs, a lot of times they'll refer to the construction cost, but that's only a component, one component of the actual project cost. So there are lots of other things that go into that in terms of testing and inspections, furniture, fixtures, and equipment, design services, geotechnical investigation, so we believe that a project should be approached from the notion that we develop a master budget so that we know if you're going to write a check for this project, it should be somehow allocated in this budget somewhere. So, our approach to that is not only to look at what the construction cost might be, but what is that, that you're going to have to write a check for when you do this project, and look at that total view of a project cost, and as opposed to coming back and saying, oh, by the way, we need another $50,000 for furniture, or we need a $10,000 fitness equipment, or whatever it might be. So, we don't like surprises, just as you don't like surprises when it comes to financing, so our attitude is try to take a holistic approach when it comes to budgeting and making sure that we're doing an accounting for everything that needs to be included. All the while, understanding that in order to get a 40- or 50-year building, there's a certain level of investment in. there's a certain level of investment that needs to be made to make sure that you're not saddled with a lot of maintenance, that you're not doing renovation in 10 years, that sort of thing. So there are some questions that have to be addressed in terms of what your priorities are from a budgeting standpoint and where you want to spend the money. Here's a, a few projects that we've completed. I caution you that some of the cost per square foot projects are old, so that's not something that we would look at. So for instance, the upper right-hand corner is, at least on station number three, that's about six years old. So that $305 a square foot has got a little age to it. The bottom right-hand corner or bottom left-hand corner, Southern Jackson, that just got dedicated approximately a month ago. And that $386 is a little more reflective of what we might see from a cost standpoint. But I think everybody knows that costs are pretty dynamic these days in terms of what things cost. And when you have, have contractors that are performing work, they're really literally guaranteeing their bid for a week.
For 24 hours.
Or 24 hours. It's really hard to, to say that with a, a lot of confidence right now. But the point being is that we are very proactive when it comes to project and budget management. And we'll work together with cause to do that. Well, we're kind of at the end of the presentation, but we want to kind of overview what we think are some key points about our team. First and foremost, we're coming to you as a team that's worked together on a number of projects, a number of successful projects. You know, we're a team that's put together with a, a local source in terms of cause construction being obviously a Leavenworth contractor. We are dedicated to providing a project that will meet your needs and also will meet your project budget parameters. We have that responsibility. We take on kind of, of what, your responsibility to the patrons of the community, assuring them that they're getting the best project for the budget. And that is a facility, when it's all done, that the city of Leavenworth, the patrons of Leavenworth are proud of from a design standpoint. And a, a project that will leave a, a legacy that you can be proud of as well. But foundationally, you know, cause construction, WSKF Architects, we can tell you that you'll get the best of what we got.
Yeah, I, I mean, I would say cause, they're, you aren't going to get another contractor that's going to care more about the quality of the building and stand behind the project. Jeff and I live here, we raised our kids here, we have to see you guys.
Drop box.
You know, we don't get to build something and leave town. We, we do stand behind our work and we're proud of our work. And if you guys have any questions on, I think, any of our experience, our team's experience.
Also, I just want to say too, our goal isn't to make the most beautiful building that we, like, that's happy, that makes us happy. Our goal is to make you guys happy. It's when you guys are happy and smiling there at that ribbon cutting, that's what makes us happy. So is it the design that we want? No, it's the design that you guys want as a city and that kind of thing. So it's important that you are happy, that's us happy for what we do.
The design be consistent with our other fire stations so that they would fit in with.
Yeah.
And then the, the water depart, the water building, is that, how many square feet is, is that for that space that you're looking at? It was hard for me to see anything here.
About 2,000 or so. Really, we need to sit down and talk with, you know, the people that are going to be using the space and figure out what it, what it needs to be in terms of their space needs. You know, there's some office space and a training space, as we mentioned, but we really need to go and sit down and, and listen to what their needs are. We do a lot of multipurpose type spaces where we can use, you know, the same space for multiple things. But sitting down and talking with them and listening to what their needs are will really help us determine what that is, you know?
And that building is close, it was hard to tell from the picture, but that building is close to where the, the fire, the, the water treatment plant is.
So where they're at right now is up in this building right here. It's hard to see it because it's under the, it's under that flood plain right now, right here.
The light is, it's hard to see, yeah.
Yeah, so we're, they're looking at moving it down this way.
Oh, got it, okay.
So it's on the same site, it's just opposite kind of.
Okay.
In some way, we're going to have to connect the two together because.
That's what I wondered, because people will be going back and forth.
Well, yeah, not only that, but there's the control center and everything is up in one facility to, to run the plant. And it's, a lot of that stuff is going to get moved to the new facility. So you still, but you still have to make a talk back and forth to, to make it run.
Right, okay.
Well, I just want to say thank you for your presentation and many years of service to our community. The only last question that I have, how long would a project like this take?
How long would the design, I mean, what do you think construction-wise will?
As far as the construction itself, I would say we're looking at.
12.
12 months, a year for the actual, once the design's complete, so. And I think that the design process, you know, depending on availability of personnel.
Sure.
You know, it's probably a, a six to seven, maybe it's eight months, it depends, but around six months, I would say, to design.
And to prefer, to preface that, some of the advantages of the design build is once we kind of degree, agreed on a design, we can get some long lead time things ordered so that you're not two years from start to finish.
You know, that's an excellent point. We're, we showed you a photograph of Southern Jackson. And we still don't have a generator and it won't be delivered until November or December this year. It was a 63-month order.
Yeah. While we're waiting on.
Yeah, thank you all so much.
Excuse me, when you say 12 months, is that just the construction? Does that include the whole, the preparation of the, the grounds and everything to make sure that, you know?
Yeah, that would take care of any of the site grading.
Yep.
And the site, the site investigation would be part of the design, so.
Yeah.
There's, there's a lot of stuff that will overlap as we're doing designs, so we could have some of the site stuff designed, they can get started on that. And while that's occurring, you have a lot of design happening on the building and facility itself. And certain things just kind of works together. So I, I have a question. So what about FEMA? What kind of timeline would they be with that? It, it could be a little bit longer process. It's all depending on what we discover on that, but sometimes that can last up to six months or more, depending on what you have to do. So hopefully not much.
Commissioner Martin?
No, no questions right now.
Okay, Commissioner Better?
I guess the only thing I have is, is the, the flood plain issue with regard to the fire department. I don't even know if that's a question or not. It's, but it, 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 is it, does it look like it'd be feasible for us to have a three-bay? Three-bay facility there?
Yeah.
I would get, I.
I, I think there is. I think that it won't be easy. But I, I think that there's the, the, I, let me put it like this, we'll try very hard to make this site work.
We've worked on some pretty tight sites before.
And we have.
Where we didn't think it was going to work out, and it did. So it just, it takes some really digging into it and understanding all the needs of the building, right, and playing that out, so.
But that's, oh, that's where we have to have it, right?
Right, it is, not just because Station 3 exists or now, based on the ISO mapping, it is the perfect location for coverage in the city.
You know if FEMA maps have been updated?
I don't.
Commissioner Manhart?
No, no, great presentation, thank you.
Just so I'm clear in my head, you're going to tear down the existing one and then start construction?
Yeah.
They can't build on top of it.
Yeah, no.
The site is really tight.
At first I actually thought it was going to be built next to it.
Yeah.
Well, that's what my question was earlier, but it's because of FEMA and that, I mean.
Yeah, the flood plain.
Yeah, because we, we actually looked at, that's a great question, because we looked at, well, could we use the apparatus bays, do something temporarily for the living quarters and still fit the station on the site? Our preliminary analysis says I don't think that's possible, but that would be something that I think we still need to study. Because we haven't really explored a multi-story solution either.
We explored possibly like renovating and adding on to existing.
Yeah. The other, the other challenge with the existing apparatus bays, I think those, those, those would be in service until it'd be time to tear those down just so that you could keep that operation there. Because if you displace the existing station, now you've got to find facilities to temporarily occupy, which is another expense to the project.
If you look at, if you look at having a second story, that, you'd have to really get input from the, from the staff on that.
Absolutely.
The fire, fire staff, fire department staff.
We, we would have to have some long discussions with the fire. We'd also have to look hard at ADA.
Right.
And what those requirements are, whether we're going to have to have an elevator.
Yep. Okay.
Thanks to think about.
Those are fun stuff.
Yeah, if there's no other comments, I want to say thank you all for your presentation, we greatly appreciate it.
Let's take a, let's take a break to switch out teams.
Yep.
Yes, that's good. Thank you.
No break.
All right, thank you.
Take step up, I say bye.
That's okay. Well, yes, thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you. Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you. Here's my card, too, you kind of met me before. Nice to meet you guys, thank you for having us.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, no, I just got a, I'll have more questions if you want to see.
Very nice to meet you.
Yeah, I appreciate you asking that. Nice to meet you, is your, yeah, cool deal. Yeah, actually, we have both the questions, yeah. I appreciate that, thank you.
With the new chick. You left one?
Yeah.
I am. She's my mother.
Oh, really?
I'll draw you a diagram, I think, and I had to have a time to see you.
Doesn't take long to drop for you.
You're learning much, I don't know, just, but the brothers.
Yeah. That's not as bad as. It's not as bad, those two brothers, putting a show on your mind, the two brothers that built the church in.
Yes.
Two different fires.
Oh.
On the same church.
Oh, my goodness. Yeah, no, it was, yeah.
My daughter got hired. I retired and sent down my mom for the pre-deduction.
Yeah.
That's okay.
He calls us every morning.
Thank you, Jerry.
He calls us every day. He calls us every morning. So we have any shooters? And he say, like, he always go.
Thank you.
He's like, I didn't do it right at all.
So much time is gone, it's all made you miss it. We get, after, I rise up and we, our, we're, we're, we're like, I said, he said, really? I said, yeah. Don't say that, it's my husband.
It's okay, he lied, I got him. That's what we do.
That's why I asked.
That's what we did.
He's just saying, I'm taking my.
They were, they were with the fire.
They're too fast.
Yeah, yeah. Not a match, well, these helpless guys, the park.
I heard some mess.
I think we have a, a janitor that probably turned out like.
Okay, I just, I can't, I was like.
The soft light now, that's all the. No, I made it.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. At least 20 years, essentially, right? That's, yeah, at least 20.
That's not.
My question. And that's what I was wondering, too, that, that, like, I'm going to change for that, you know, to part of that situation. I just wanted to make sure.
Oh, yeah. Perfect. Well, I know, that's what I was going to do, so.
Hi, how are you? I like that time.
How are you? Oh, absolutely.
Thank you, thank you. Oh, hi, nice to meet you. Hi, Ken, I'm Grace, nice to meet you. Spent some time there, no. I was a risk manager at West, and they used to, she used to own that hospital.
Jermaine Wilson, this man. Like Jermaine Jackson.
Nice to meet you.
Hi, I'm Grace, yeah, nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Hi, I'm Christine. Christine, nice to meet you.
Christine, I'm Grace.
Yes. Oh, yes, there is.
Necessary, I'm. I'm making. Our, it doesn't have the white.
It doesn't have none of the fonts.
There's, there was, we had this problem, there we go, that looks cool, I like that. So I'm just trying to.
Open the PDF for us. Let's do the, let's do the PDF. We, we, because we were, yes, because this happened for a while, it's just so frustrating. I don't know why it's that way, so we apologize. I know, I know.
So you guys are taking off that, is that a thing?
Uh, yeah, we'll do window, and then, well, okay, view, sorry, view.
Thanks.
Uh, there should be a full screen.
There we go.
That's exactly it, yes. Get it there, okay. Yeah.
I couldn't even see, I couldn't even see that. I got 20, 20.
Oh, really?
Do we have enough chairs?
I got 20, 20. But I couldn't see that.
Are you sitting here? Oh, okay, I was going to say, I'm just going to move it around over there.
Testing, yes.
As we all came around and shook hands.
Forgive me the way.
I missed you, but right now, I knew you were, you had a, you had a mission to run.
Is everybody good?
In that you got your.
Yep.
I got my. The picture inside is, is where these people actually live every day, right? Whether you work at the water facility or you work in a fire station, you live there every day. So we want to make that just as beautiful as the outside.
And you notice a lot of these things, durability is a huge thing with both these facilities. And just because things are durable doesn't necessarily mean they need to cost more. And we've gone through so many cost evaluations with Turner, and we can show you those options as we kind of go through design and be a real, real advantage. So, when you, when you see that, the collaboration, not only do we both have great fire station experience independently, but they are together, and that's kind of repeating what you're saying. And that shared knowledge together, we think is the difference between us and a lot of other teams that you might be taking a look at. So, you know, there's really no learning curve with us. So that's a, that's a great thing. Now, we'll talk a little bit about the process going through. You know, our, the design process, and really kind of all the way through, is, is based on these five bubbles on this chart here. It starts out with trust. And in order to gain trust, some of those projects that you've seen on there, we like to tour some of those buildings with you, whether we've designed them or you've done them with another architect or a few that way, too. But the idea is to create an atmosphere where we learn to speak together, we learn to collaborate with the firefighters, and that's what that next is, because our design philosophy is really collaboration-based. The only projects that we've had that really weren't successful, I think I've only had one the whole time I've been at Hafer Welker, we just couldn't get the clients to talk. You know what I mean? We couldn't figure out what they wanted. They weren't, they weren't open. But this process helps us to stimulate that idea, whether the council and people want to come with us, but we can certainly get the firefighters and the people from Public Works out there. The idea behind that is we're going to use our shared knowledge and experience together. We're the design team, but your staff is all on the design team with us. So we don't care where the great ideas come from. The idea, my job, is to make sure we capture those great ideas and identify them and roll them into the project, and your job is to make sure that we maintain that and can afford it. So we, we do problem solving together, and, and the idea is that you're not going to get a carbon copy of a fire station we built over in Belton. You're going to get a, a building that is customized for you, that meets your budget, looks like you want it to look, and functions the way you want it to. And that's the whole essence of our project. If you talk to our clients, that is what they would say about us, where they felt like they couldn't believe how collaborative that we are. And we feel like that's our, if we're winning any design awards at all, having clients happy because they got to collaborate and they got to tell us what they liked and didn't like, we think that's a real differentiator for us and for our team.
And you have not just one, but two really important projects here. The wastewater treatment admin facility is just as important. Darren, do you want to talk a little bit about the site due diligence process?
Sure. So, like Ken mentioned, we'll all be working together throughout the process, but really, to get started and off on the right foot, you need to do your homework. And that homework is site due diligence. And that's both for the fire station and for the admin building, because we know already from taking a look at it, that, you know, there's some concerns about the floodplain being very close and some fill that might not be suitable for the admin building. And also thinking about issues on the fire station site, how are we going to have good access? We know there's a fire station there now, but this is going to be a different building. There's trees. And trying to think through things, I use an example, and we work closely with Turner when you start thinking about site costs. Your, your cut fill and your material that you use to bring on site, six inches could make tens of thousands of dollars difference if not done correctly and understanding everything. So, and that also means working with the architecture team from figuring out the best placement of the building, how close are utilities, and helping navigate that through the entitlement process to get approval through, through the city. So having experience doing all that works together to make it a streamlined process while working with you.
The image there that you just saw on the screen was actually a real site image, where our teams were able to collaborate early in the design process, raise the building six inches on the site, and save the client a quarter of a million dollars in doing so. So before shovels ever hit the ground, when we were doing our homework, we were able to achieve those savings day one. Before we start designing, before Ken and Catherine really start pulling together the blueprints for your project, we're going to start looking at some cost data. Now, these numbers appear too small for you to read. We'll be reading them in real life when this process starts, but these are several fire stations around the Kansas City metro area, many of which we've worked on together, and these are the real costs associated with the building systems that are delineated here. The structure, the excavation and foundation, the plumbing, the mechanical, the electrical. We have real cost data that we can utilize to inform your design as we start to solicit feedback and input from you as far as what your program should be. This means we're not guessing. We're not just estimating based on a cost indices that someone else has about fire stations. These are projects that we've physically built, and we can reach out to the individuals and the companies that physically, like, did the work to even ask further questions and dig deeper where we need to. We know that you have a fixed budget. We work on projects with these types of budgets, this team, almost all of the time. We took a little stab at breaking down how we think your budget might, might divide between the admin building and the fire station. And then what we typically see as it relates to building systems within, to those two types of structures. You know, in both instances, you'll see that mechanical, electrical, and plumbing are generally about 30% of your construction costs. So it's something that we want to keep in mind as we're talking about structure, the types of finishes and things that, that we want to select as the process goes on. We want to start with that budget so everybody gets to participate, but we're not showing you things to fall in love with that you can't afford. That's something that we have seen happen on so many projects. You get to see these beautiful pictures and renderings, and then we put together an estimate, and we're too far over your budget. We don't do that.
You know, I call that, you know, sometimes we design a nice suit, and at that point, all you have to do is, is just lop off the arm of the suit, and you got a three-quarters of a really beautiful building. That's not going to happen. You know, from a designer's standpoint, one of the things we hate to do is redesign and rework all the drawings. And one of the things I've loved about working with Turner over the years is their numbers are accurate. I mean, when we get in there, plus or minus just a few percent, when we start and go into a design, we have a high level of confidence that we can afford that going in. And we use those tours that we, that we take together to look at different materials, flooring, lighting, lighting levels and things like that, so we can throw those in. If you like a certain type of material better than the other, we know, we can reflect that in that early cost estimate. Because, rally, how do you cost estimate a building you haven't started designing yet? And that's what we're talking about with them. We are both really good at that. We've been on the same page with that for 10 years, and it's really been effective for our clients.
Because, again, you know, at the start of what we'll call the charrette process, and a lot of firms say they do a charrette process. Ours is maybe a little bit different, so I'm so excited to tell you about it, because it's probably my favorite part of the project. I'm going to jump in and interrupt her, which is very unprofessional. I'm, I'm sorry about that. But we go through a charrette process on every project with every design firm, and when she says this is a different process, it is more, it is very, very different. You are providing real-time input into design with your preferences and your requirements and your program, and they're not just doing it and glossing over it and then plugging in a design that they like anyway. Your stuff that, that you pick out is actually going to end up in this design, and that's not something that, that I see on other projects. Well, I, thank you. I mean, I'm passionate about it, because what it means is, we get the best of all of us. So we all sit in a room about this big. Every single wall is full of drawings, which is kind of an exciting process, right? So we get all the stakeholders in. We can present and discuss what the goals are for your project before we even start drawing anything.
which has resulted in on-time, on-schedule projects, um, on-budget projects and projects with happy clients. I think you had some recommendation letters in the submission that we submitted earlier. And we think that one thing that sets us apart, we know that being local is important. Everyone on this team is part of the Kansas City metro area, but because of Turner's size, we have not only the local presence, but the national resources that we can bring in assistance. And we have our pulse on the market, not only locally, but nationally, to make sure that your project gets the focus it deserves. Here are some examples of projects that, um, you probably have on the placemat in front of you too. But this really just demonstrates some of the civic projects that we have done, again, both independently, but also together. This means that we know how we all work together and we can hit the ground running day one to make sure your interests are served.
Uh, these are a couple of projects that we just finished actually with Turner Construction. Gladstone Fire and also South Metro Fire and Admin. And the reason we're showing you these pictures is, one, they all look different, right? Outside of the red doors, the fire stations are, are a reflection of what the city wanted, um, what those clients wanted. The other thing that's really important is there's a lot of technical knowledge that you have to have when you design a fire station. And we both have that collectively. Inside the building is just as important as outside, right? The picture inside is, uh, is where these people actually live every day, right? Whether you work at the water facility or you work in a fire station, you live there every day. So we want to make that just as beautiful as the outside.
And you notice a lot of these things durability is a huge thing with both these facilities. And just because things are durable doesn't necessarily mean they need to cost more. And we've gone through so many cost evaluations with Turner and we can show you those options as we kind of go through design and be a real, real advantage. So when you, when you see that, uh, the, the collaboration, not only do we both have great fire station experience independently, but they are together. And that's kind of repeating what you're saying. And that shared knowledge together, we think is the difference between us and a lot of other teams you might be taking a look at. So you know, there's really no learning curve with us. So that's a, that's a great thing. Now we'll talk a little bit about the process going through. You know, our, the design process and really kind of all the way through is, is based on these five bubbles on, on this chart here. It starts out with trust. And in order to gain trust, some of those projects that you've seen on there, we'd like to tour some of those buildings with you, whether we've designed them or you've built, done, done with another architect or a few that way too. But the idea is to create a, an atmosphere where we learn to speak together. We learn to collaborate with the firefighters and that's what that next step is because our design philosophy is really collaboration-based. The, the only projects that we've had that really weren't successful, I think I've only had one the whole time I've been at Hayver Welker. We just couldn't get the clients to talk. You know what I mean? We couldn't figure out what they wanted. They weren't, they weren't open. But this process helps us to stimulate that idea, whether the council and people want to come with us, but we can certainly get the firefighters and the people from Public Works out there. The, the idea behind that is we're going to use our shared knowledge and experience together. We're the design team, but your staff is all on the design team with us. So we don't care where the great ideas come from. The idea, my job is to make sure we capture those great ideas and identify them and roll them into the project. And your job is to make sure that we maintain that and can afford it. So we, we do problem solving together and, uh, and the idea is that you're not going to get a carbon copy of a fire station we build over in Belton. You're going to get a, a, a building that is customized for you, that meets your budget, looks like you want it to look and functions the way you want it to. And that's the whole essence of our project. If you talk to our clients, that is what they would say about us. They felt like they, they couldn't believe how collaborative that we are. And we feel like that's our, if we're winning any design awards at all, having clients happy because they got to collaborate and they got to tell us what they liked and didn't like, we think that's a real differentiator for, for us and for our team.
And you have not just one, but two really important projects here. The wastewater treatment admin facility is just as important. Darren, do you want to talk a little bit about the site due diligence process?
Sure. So like Ken mentioned, we'll all be working together throughout the process. But really to get started and off on the right foot, you need to do your homework. And that homework is site due diligence. And that's both for the fire station and for the admin building. Cause we know already from taking a look at it, that, you know, there's some concerns about the flood plain being very close and some fill that might not be suitable for the admin building. And also thinking about issues on the, um, fire station site, how are we going to have good access? We know there's a fire station there now, but this is going to be a different building. There's trees and trying to think through things. I use an example and we work closely with Turner when you start thinking about site costs. Your, your cut fill and your material that you use to bring on site, six inches could make tens of thousands of dollars difference, if not done correctly and understanding everything. So, and that also means working with the architecture team from figuring out the best placement of the building, how close are utilities, and helping navigate that through the entitlement process to get approval through, through the city. So having experience doing all that works together to make it a streamlined process while working with you.
The image there that you just saw on the screen was actually a real site, um, image, where our teams were able to collaborate early in the design process, raise the building six inches on the site and save the client a quarter of a million dollars in doing so. So before shovels ever hit the ground, when we were doing our homework, we were able to achieve those savings day one. Before we start designing, before Ken and Catherine really start pulling together the blueprints for your project, we're going to start looking at some cost data. Now, these numbers appear too small for you to read. We'll be reading them in real life when this process starts. But these are several fire stations around the Kansas City metro area, um, many of which we've worked on together. And these are the real costs associated with the building systems that are delineated here. The structure, the excavation and foundation, the plumbing, the mechanical, the electrical. We have real cost data that we can utilize to inform your design as we start to solicit feedback and input from you as far as what your program should be. This means we're not guessing. We're not just estimating based on a cost indices that someone else has about fire stations. These are projects that we've physically built and we can reach out to the individuals and the companies that physically like did the work to even ask further questions and dig deeper where we need to. We know that you have a fixed budget. We work on projects with these types of budgets, this team, almost all of the time. We took a little stab at breaking down how we think your budget might, might divide between the admin building and the fire station. And then what we typically see as it relates to building systems within, to those two types of structures. You know, in both instances, you'll see that mechanical, electrical and plumbing are generally about thirty percent of your construction costs. So it's something that we want to keep in mind as we're talking about structure. The types of finishes and things that, that we want to select as the process goes on. We want to start with that budget so everybody gets to participate, but we're not showing you things to fall in love with that you can't afford. That's something that we have seen happen on so many projects. You get to see these beautiful pictures and renderings and then we put together an estimate and we're too far over your budget.
Yeah, I call that.
We don't do that.
I call that, you know, sometimes we design a nice suit and at that point, all you have to do is, is just lop off the arm of the suit and you've got a three quarters of a really beautiful building. You know, from a designer standpoint, one of the things we hate to do is redesign and rework all the drawings. And one of the things I've loved about working with Turner over the years is their numbers are accurate. I mean, we, when we get in there, plus or minus just a few percent, when we start and go into a design, we have a high level of confidence that we can afford that going in. And we use those tours that we, that we take together to look at different materials, flooring, lighting, lighting levels and things like that. So we can throw those in. If you like a certain type of material better than the other, we know, we can reflect that in that early cost estimate. Because rally, how do you cost estimate a building you haven't started designing yet? And that's what we're talking about with them. We are both really good at that. We've been on the same page with that for ten years and it's really been effective for our clients.
Cause again, you know, at the start of what we'll call the charrette process and a lot of firms say they do a charrette process. Ours is maybe a little bit different, so I'm so excited to tell you about it because it's probably my favorite part of the project.
I'm going to jump in and interrupt her, which is very unprofessional. I'm, I'm sorry about that. But we go through a charrette process on every project with every design firm. And when she says this is a different process, it is more, it is very, very different. You are providing real-time input into design with your preferences and your requirements and your program. And they're not just doing it and glossing over it and then plugging in a design that they like anyway. Your stuff that, that you pick out is actually going to end up in this design. And that's not something that, that I see on other projects.
Well, I, thank you. I mean, I'm passionate about it because what it means is we, we get the best of all of us. So we all sit in a room about this big. Every single wall is full of drawings, which is kind of an exciting process, right? So we get all the stakeholders in. We can present and discuss what the goals are for your project before we even start drawing anything. And from there, three to four days, we've designed floor plans, site plans, elevations. We have 3D models of these two buildings and we're working here in your office so that everyone can come in, spend ten minutes with us, talk to us about what, what their feelings are. The fire, different, uh, different, uh, help me with this. Different groups of the fire could come in, yeah.
Yeah, let's see, shift changes.
Shift changes, thank you. I'm sorry. I was like.
Stew on that one, man.
Bumbling, help me.
You know, there is no way we're going to design your building in three or four days. But we're going to be able to give it a start in our direction that is, that is compatible and is exactly what, what you want to see. You know, and we're not going to have your staff sitting here that whole time. They come in the morning, the first day, have a couple hours. We show them all the research that we've done so they have as much knowledge about the project as we do. Their only way that they can engage in decision-making is if they know what they're doing. So we do all that due diligence, bring it to you, hey, there's a big storm line over here we've got to stay away from. We're going to have to accept, wipe out these two or three trees. As long as everybody's okay with that, then we can proceed on. And then they might come back later that day or the next morning. The idea is that we're there working in your facility.
Right.
If they can't make a meeting, they can come back two hours later. We'll give them a briefing. They might have ideas. And it really allows us to really draw every idea you can think of so we don't have a bunch of stones that have been interned and said, hey, I wonder if we should have looked at this? Well, if somebody had the idea to look at something different, we did, we did it.
Well, and, um, I, I don't know if you can tell or if you can see my cursor here. That wall that's covered with all those imagery of the, of different building facades. We're going to start there with you, right? So we're going to say, what do you like and what do you not like? And we're going to let you go. Red and green dots. What do you like? What do you not like? Do you not like it because it's greenish glass? Or do you not like it because it, the building's too big? Let's communicate together about what that means to like something so that we're going in the same direction for the overall look and aesthetic of your building.
We take the guesswork out of it. Somebody says, well, I'd like to have a modern looking building or something that looks residential. Well, what the heck does that mean? But if we put these images up, seventy or eighty images on the wall, let them do that, then all of a sudden we're hearing it.
Yeah.
And we, we're experiencing it together and it may, it may, that's why our buildings all look different. No client that I know of has ever given us the same direction. And we're fine with that. Then we kind of go into the, to, to the, the collaboration schedule. I know, uh, quality assurance and budget management are incredibly important things in a civic project. You know, there really no, no room for error for going over budget in a city project. It makes us look bad. Heck, it even makes you all look bad if it gets out in the media that we're over budget on things. You know, we just don't need that. We've got great processes built in with, with different things that we do, that do that. But we also check the budget and do quality assurance on our, on our drawings from the beginning, before we start design, at every key milestone on there. And one of the things I get that I like about you is your numbers just get more refined. They don't drop and find out we lost the, a wing of the building. And that is really, knock on wood, that is really important.
Part of the process that allows us to be, in our minds, so accurate with our estimates is that we get trade partner input at the very beginning. We're going to start telling the construction market, this project's coming. We're going to engage them, get them excited about it. Kansas City is a very busy construction market right now. But by engaging those trade partners or subcontractors early, we can make sure that they know what it's coming, when the bids are. They can put it on their calendar. They can come meet with us and talk to us about the different design systems. And maybe there's one type of wall that is less expensive than another type of wall, but it would look the same. They can give that input day one, or maybe there's a material that takes longer. We're going to be soliciting that input from the very beginning so that there's no surprises when it comes time to bid out the job. We build eighty-five percent of our projects in occupied buildings or next to occupied buildings. A lot of the fire stations that you see on your placemat, we've been doing construction in them as they continue to operate. Now, in this instance, you've chosen not to do that. We're kind of excited. That means it's going to be a very smooth, smooth project. Easy for us, but we're very, very sensitive to what's going on around us. It's our job to be a good representation of you and to be a good neighbor to the people in your community. So we communicate a lot, maybe more sometimes than, than other people would think is necessary. But if we have a big concrete pour and there's going to be extra trucks parked around the job site, we want to let everybody know that that's going to be happening. Or if we have a major delivery coming, we want to make sure it doesn't get scheduled when school buses are driving by so that they're having to go around it. It's important for us to coordinate every detail of construction when it starts to make sure that we remain a good neighbor and a good member of your community. Part of the approach that, that I will say is proven on every one of our projects is that everything is completely open book. From day one, as we're obtaining that trade partner or subcontractor input, we'll show you what those numbers are. We'll explain to you what they mean, what may be missing and what we think we need to include to, to carry something, just to be sure. All of that detail is available to you so that you know what it is at all times, as much or as little as you want.
Even after the bids come in, you know, the nice thing about you hiring a team like this is you, you'll do, I think we call it a bid tab, where you show all the subcontractors for the different trades. And there might be a local subcontractor here that might be just a fraction higher than someone from out of town. And boy, if we wanted to work with them and, and promote local industry, we have the flexibility to do that because you're involved in that, you can certainly have some input on that. You know, and I think that, that's a, a deal. So if you look at this, all these things that talk about our process, the things that, if, if we only drive home one point, the reason we think it's unique is because we have done this so many times together. We're not trying to train each other on your job. And that's a big deal. You know what I mean? If, if we make mistakes or they make mistakes or between us and our communication, we make mistakes, who, who gets sacrificed? The city we're working for. So you can rest assured that we're going to have great communication and we've done this quite a few times before.
Thank you. Again, as we spoke of earlier, we're all local to Kansas City. Senior PM that I mentioned earlier, Brett, lives less than ten minutes away. We all live within about twenty-five, thirty minutes of your job sites. But because of Turner's size, we have not only that local presence, that local connection to the subcontractors and the construction workers in this market, but we have national resources to obtain information about long material lead items. Early purchase of equipment that may have those long lead time items that we could purchase direct and even cut some of the margin off of to get it here sooner. Something that we do very regularly.
Well, and I'll say, we're, our in-house mechanical, electrical, plumbing group would be the designers on the job. And so because we're a team, we can talk with those designers and say, oh, this, this system has taken too long. It's taken an extra twenty weeks lead time to purchase. Can we go with this system? And then we modify our design during the, during the drawing process, before it even goes out to bid, to then achieve something that they can procure on time, right? So in-house MEP, that's a big deal for you guys. Cause again, there's no miscommunication on, on what are the systems and how we're coordinating them, so.
You know, and that, that, that is a great thing with our MEP group.
We have the local expertise for fire stations. Our team has built several together. We think we're one of the, you know, just the, the best fire station builders in the Kansas City metro area. We've also.
You are the best.
Thank you, Ken. We also like to believe that we are the chief delivery, um, uh, delivery contractor and design firm for all municipal office buildings. So we think that fits right in line with your water treatment plant, municipal administration building. Not only, again, do we have these resources locally and in Kansas City, but if there's ever a time that we need some type of subject matter expertise, we can call any of our forty-four offices and gain that information from somebody who is employed by Turner that can answer a quick phone call, come in and take a look at the job or help us solve a problem if it ever arises. Doesn't happen very often, but it's nice to have that phone a friend, right? When there's something that you need. And because of our size and our connectivity across the market, we're able to do that. Again, because Turner, um, is a larger contractor and we usually don't say that in interviews. We usually drive local and we don't talk about national. But I think right now in this market, it's important for you to understand that our size gives us information that no one else has. Turner is basically building the two largest projects in the Kansas City metro area. That means we know who's working where. We know who has capacity to take on more. We know where the manpower is located and we can ensure that your project gets the focus that it deserves.
That's so important because when we're designing to a budget, getting access to the subcontractor market and ninety-five percent of the work commanders are all going to be bid through subcontractors. If we can get that, we know that those prices will hold, hold steady. We've just had a couple of jobs lately that where you've proven that you had that, that expertise and that has been very nice.
It allows us really to accurately predict.
Well, and think about whose phone call am I going to answer as that subcontractor? The, the company who's, who's building a lot of work in Kansas City or, or a smaller, a smaller company? I mean, I think that's a positive thing. And honestly, you get the same team sitting in front of you the whole time anyway. So, um, it's a, it's a small-town feel, right? It's just us.
I heard something a while back that your average project size is around five million dollars or something.
Yes.
Even though you're one of the bigger country, countries. And I, that was amazing to me, but I, I believe it because we're doing a lot of them with you, so.
Yep. My entire division focuses on projects of this size, most of which are fire and municipal facilities. So we hope that we have talked, um, you through why we believe that we are the best fit for your projects. Our collective experience, our proven process. Obviously, we know each other pretty well and we've done this a few times. But we think that that really puts us in a good position to be your local builder.
Yeah, I definitely want to say, man, great presentation. I really loved your collaborative, uh, approach, including staff within the design. And then also your open book approach. I thought that was pretty creative and, uh, very much needed. Thank you for presenting. At this time, we want to open it up to the commissioners if they have any questions or comments. Starting with Kamala, Commissioner.
I don't at this time. Um, a lot of information process, but yeah, great presentation. And I like your, you know, your camaraderie that you have and, uh, your excitement and everything that you've done prior to this, so. And, uh, yeah, communication. So thank you.
Thank you.
If I do, I'll reach out.
Please do.
Absolutely.
I agree. You know, obviously you guys have worked together. There's no mistaking that. Question, your subcontractors, how far out do you reach trying to get subcontractors? Or do you try to stay as local as possible to get your subcontractors?
That's really driven by what you'd like us to do. Um, I think in this market, it's important for us to reach out probably beyond Leavenworth just based on capacity and the type of systems that you're going to need for your buildings. That said, again, we'll review the capacity, risks, any risks that might be part of the process or part of the project for a particular contractor. And that'll be something that we review together as a team before we select who's going to actually move forward.
One of the things that might lead into that is they have this ability to buy equipment, especially the long lead equipment. Cannibal equipment, uh, electrical panels, things that are just, for some reason in this age, it's supply chain issues are creating long lead items. And then those pieces of equipment can be assigned to the subcontractor, which allows maybe some smaller contractors to actually procure the job in the right, in a positive manner because they don't have to worry about getting the equipment if they don't have connections like Turner does.
It does two things. It saves you margin on the purchase of the equipment itself, right? One layer of margin instead of two for the subcontractor. But where a subcontractor may not be able to cash flow that purchase, because you have to pay for it when you order it, it will be able to be something that they can go ahead and install. So that, that's how it allows those smaller contractors to participate in a project that they might not otherwise get a chance to.
The reason I said that is because that might have a direct correlation to how far out do we reach? If we can get contractors that are capable of doing it, but maybe just can't procure the equipment and things.
Thank you. Commissioner Martin?
Uh, just knowing what you know about everything that's been laid out, um, ahead of time for you guys. Thoughts on timeframes for turnaround from the time you start construction to?
You said, you don't have the contracts in your pocket, do you? We can get that started today.
Are you available for a charrette starting tomorrow?
Sorry, that was probably.
We're ready to hit the ground running. I think we'd need to talk about some systems things and also what those long lead time items are going to come out of so we can order those things early. What we want to do is build the project as quickly as possible for you. That's probably that eight to nine month window for the fire station, hopefully significantly less at the water treatment facility. What we don't want you to do is move out and then it sits empty, right? That's wasteful. So we want to get the design completed. We want to order any of those long lead time materials. We want to come up with a very clear move plan for the fire department so that they can move out just in time for us to start construction and get the thing built for you as quickly and as efficiently as possible. We do something very similar at the water treatment administration building as well.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Commissioner Bowden?
No, I don't have anything right now. I think, when we discussed earlier ourselves, I think I got most of those questions answered and you guys gave a great presentation, so I'm.
I know, I don't know if you can, it's, it's tough because we, we only get to meet you for twenty minutes. You know, we went on the tour, obviously, but it's tough to show the passion that we have in such a short amount of time.
I think you're doing a good job of that.
Okay, so when we showed up to work today, I said, are we going to prom?
But we know each other well.
We do. We do. But it, it's just, I'm, I appreciate all of your time and it was, you know, any other questions that you have moving forward, we'd love to answer.
I can't think of any right now, but I'll, through our city manager, we could do.
Hey, thank you all once again for your time and safe travels and. Okay.
Who of you here lives in Le- in Leavenworth? Who does? Who lives in Leavenworth of the four of you?
We do not live in Leavenworth.
I was just wondering if I was going to, you know, run across you in Billings.
You will see me a couple of times a month, um, shopping at my mom's favorite store. And we go to Mexican next door every single time. So you know where we're at. So you'll probably, we just came from there. So you'll, you'll probably still run into us, unfortunately or unfortunately, depending on what you're looking for.
You shouldn't pretend it was Kiglin when we met a couple of weeks ago. Cause he, you know, he commutes to work now and living five minutes away is going to be like a vacation for him as well.
Yeah, he was pretty excited.
Those are, there's two projects, it's not just one building.
But yeah, just, uh, thank you for your time, your presentation, uh, safe travels and.
Thank you.
There's no other questions or comments. We appreciate you.
Thanks, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, we had some, uh, some great presentations.
Yeah.
Yeah. We discussed this. That conclude our, uh, study session. At this time, we want to go around the table, starting with our city manager.
Nothing tonight.
Nothing tonight.
I really don't have anything to add to what everybody has already said.
Commissioner Martin?
I'm just, Paul, how soon will we be talking about this again?
So I'm going to reach out. I, I get an understanding of if you have, if there's follow-up questions, it's a good question. So let me do a little, little formal. So what's the next step in the process? I'll give commissioners about a week or so. I'll reach out individually to see what questions you may have. And if I feel like that we're all settled, then the next meeting, I would, I would, because the, the next action is just a consensus for staff to move forward with one of the firms. Any kind of scope of agreement, contract will of course come back to you before we got into any of the project design or anything. But that would be the next step is for a consensus of the commission to move, direct staff to move forward with one of the firms.
Cool deal. Yeah. I'm good then, yeah.
Commissioner Bowden?
Well, I just wanted to say thank you to everybody who came out for the St. Patrick's Day parade. It was cold out there, but there was, um, it was a beautiful sunny day and, and it was, uh, it was really, uh, great to see the public come out. And that's, that's the first event of spring as far as I'm concerned. I've been on the parade committee for thirty-three years, I figured out. And, um, every year it's different, but at least it wasn't snowing or sleeting like it has in the past. So thank you all for, for coming out and supporting the St. Patrick's Day parade.
Uh, only thing I want to say is just, uh, thank you to the teachers. We are back in school session and, uh, also man, just praying over our students as well. God bless you to everyone in the community and hope you all have a great day.